Hello, welcome. This is the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson and this is the Supervisors of District Two Candidate Forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any particular candidate or party. This candidate forum is a service to the community. I am Vivian Hart, the moderator for this forum. Now you, as the audience members, are welcome to send questions through the webinar to the candidates during this forum. You can submit your questions at any time during the forum. To ask a question, find the QA bottom in Zoom and you can do this by moving your cursor to bring up the menus. The QA is in the menu at the bottom of your screen and click on that icon. When the QA panel opens, type your question directly into the box. League members will collect the questions and communicate them to me and I will ask them of the candidates. Let me tell you about the Board of Supervisors and what they are responsible for. They're responsible for steering public policy in Pima County. The board provides direction to the county administrator and the county's various departments to create safe communities, nurture economic development, sustainably manage natural resources, and protect public health. In addition to overseeing the delivery of many municipal services, including roads, parks, libraries, and law enforcement, board members are responsible for approving the county budget and board members also set the amount of taxes to be levied. So now I would like to introduce our candidates. First, Matt Hines is the Democratic candidate. He is a doctor, an internist and hospitalist at Tucson Medical Center. He was elected to the Arizona House of Representatives where he served for two years between 2009 and 2013. He was chosen by his Democratic colleagues to serve as caucus whip and in the House he focused on seniors, veterans, and healthcare issues, working across the aisle to write and pass key legislation. He was appointed by President Obama to serve as the Director of Provider Outreach in the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services where he helped to implement the Affordable Care Act. He was in this position between 2013 and 2015. In 2014, he was tasked with assisting in the domestic response to the Ebola pandemic. Anthony Sizer is the Republican candidate. He has been a resident of Arizona for 15 years. He is a native of India, was orphaned, and came to the United States when he was nine years old. He was raised on a 500-acre apple and cherry farm in Granger, Washington. He earned an Eagle Scout badge and later became a state champion long jumper. He earned a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering from the Oregon Institute of Technology and currently works as an engineer at Raytheon. He is also an at-large executive committee member of the Pima County Republican Party and a former chair of Republican Legislative District Two. We're very pleased to have you here and now I would like to go over the how this forum will operate. You will each have two minutes to introduce yourselves. Then I will ask you many questions. The first candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer. The second candidate will have one minute to respond and then the first candidate again will have 30 seconds to respond. The questions will be asked on a rotating basis back and forth. After the questions, you will each have one minute for a closing statement. So let's begin. Candidate Hines, you have two minutes to introduce yourself.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for making this forum a possibility. I think it's really wonderful to be able to get out there in front of the voters in our new kind of pandemic Zoom format here and I look forward to hearing questions obviously from League members and also from those who are tuning in in whichever format. As you heard, I, my name is Matt Hines. I am a physician, a hospital physician, and do most of my work at Tucson Medical Center. That has been the type of medical work I've done for pretty much my entire adult life after training at the University of Arizona for my residency in internal medicine, which is actually what brought me here to Southern Arizona 17 years ago now. I have served, as you heard, in the state legislature for a number of years and learned a lot about how our state government works and was really compelled to do that just because of how I saw the healthcare system really being adversely affected by a lot of decisions that our policymakers were making, but just having really so many people without the ability to get access to quality affordable healthcare in any way due to the lack of health insurance and other complicating factors. So I took that motivation with me to the legislature and worked a lot and across the aisle with a lot of my Republican colleagues to get a variety of things passed to help with those issues and also just others in the community as well. I spent some time also working for the federal government with regard to the Affordable Care Act and learned a lot about how that very large bureaucracy works and in some cases doesn't work. And I think that is a valuable experience and background to bring to the area. But I was particularly motivated with regard to the county supervisor race to jump in a little bit last minute. It wasn't something I was expecting to do, but I was really moved by what I started to see in the hospital from my perspective as a hospital physician here locally, the number of cases that we were seeing of coronavirus and also really the lack of adequate federal or even a state level response. And that's something that really, really made me very concerned and something that prompted me to want to get involved at a county level, which as we've heard, has a lot to do with public health here locally and in the community.
Thank you very much. And now Candidate Sizer, please, a two-minute opening.
Thank you very much, Vivian, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for inviting me to this. First of all, my name is Anthony Sizer. I'm candidate for the Board of Supervisor District Two. I am an Eagle Scout. I am an engineer. I'm not a career politician. I did run for State House in the past and part of running that, I have developed a relationship with many state legislatures. I've had the privilege of writing a House bill on constitutional rights and protection, including those who have received unconstitutional court orders. You can learn about that. It was in the 2016 session. It's HB 2050. What it does is allow you to vacate judgments that were not based on due process or evidence. So one thing I'm homing in on by saying that, because I was an orphan in India, I was adopted. I lived in a world in India where it was a caste-based system and I did not have the opportunities or privileges that I've received here. As you know, I'm an Eagle Scout, I'm an engineer, and all of those things, I'm grateful simply because our nation is unique, constitutional-based. And so when I see our current Board of Supervisors making decisions on a political decision rather than personal responsibility of the elected offices that are actually governed by we, the people, so that's why I stepped in. I do believe that everybody deserves an opportunity and so I'm running not as a career politician but to represent you and to help solve your problem. Again, my name is Anthony Sizer and I ask for your vote for Board of Supervisors District Two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now let's start with the questions. Mr. Sizer, we will start with you. You have one and a half minutes. What is the most important thing you want to accomplish as supervisor?
So I would like to accomplish the key pieces, which I define as infrastructure. Some people see infrastructure as something different. It's not just roads, it's not just facility, it is actually making sure our first responders are properly funded, making sure our law enforcement is supported. One of the big issues that occurred recently is the Stone Garden funding and I want to say again, it reflects back to my Indian life where I didn't have any constitutional rights or protection or freedom. In the same way, families along the border deserve the right to be protected and so I believe that it was purely political decision-making when the Sheriff's Department did not, were not authorized by the Board of Supervisors to receive the Stone Garden funding, which is a grant money, meaning free money, and it was clear that it was political. I am not a politician again. I am here to help solve problems and ensure our infrastructure pieces, including law enforcement, including first responders, are properly funded. So those are my key aspects. Additionally, since I've got 30 seconds, the boards and commissions need to be balanced. Currently, including my own Board of Supervisor, current Board of Supervisor, has intentionally stacked the commissions to where only one political side viewpoint always comes out. So I would like to fix that and balance that out. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Hines, you have one minute to respond.
Sorry, there we go. Forgive the delay and now I can see everybody too. So I would like to first and foremost make sure that the board, that the board has the necessary background and informed decisions to get the community safely through the pandemic, which I know is on a lot of folks' minds. It's one of the main things that I've been running on in my primary campaign and it's something I believe that my background in medicine will help me to uniquely be able to inform. So I want to be a resource and for the board and for the, our public health department, which of course is at the county level. And another priority of mine and something I've been talking about throughout the primary is working to make sure that those who have been so affected during the pandemic-induced downturn are able to get the resources they need as well.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Sizer, you have 30 seconds to respond.
With regard to the pandemic, I certainly agree with the transparency that we need to have with our residents about the, any future pandemics and the current pandemic COVID-19. We certainly need to be transparent as we make decisions rather than appearing a dictatorship and impacting various entities and businesses. We need to be transparent so that they know that we're not making decisions out of a political whim.
Thank you very much. And now, Mr. Hines, the next question is for you. You have one and a half minutes to answer. What do you see as your role in the public controversy over funding and oversight of the Sheriff's Department? Mr. Hines, you have a minute and a half. You need to unmute yourself.
Oh, I get to do that myself. Okay, no problem. Sorry, it has been, yeah, I was waiting for that to happen. Okay, so thank you, thank you for the question. I think that with regard to, of course, funding for the Sheriff's Department, that is a primary role of the board and that is something that, you know, I think we have to have, we have to have a discussion about with regard specifically to funding that is like the Stone Garden funding that I heard referenced previously. I think that it is important to be a, believe to be a steward of the county taxpayer dollar. And so I would hesitate to take that grant funding from the federal government again only because, or for a couple of reasons, but firstly, I think it's important to not obligate the county for excessive pension costs going forward, which is something that the county administrator was able to figure out. The county was actually going to end up losing money despite the grant by accepting it due to some of the inflated pensions. So I think that I do agree with the board's previous decision to, at this point, not accept those funds due to the additional financial burden it would place upon the county residents. And so again, there is no direct oversight of the Sheriff's Department. That's, that is the sheriff and the deputies.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sizer, you have one minute to respond.
Certainly, the Stone Garden funding is actually free. Grant money is basically federal money that helps to engage those law enforcement entities that are able to support Border Patrol-related areas where Border Patrol agents are insufficient or they don't have enough or it's further into our county. So there should be no backlash. Obviously, there is oversight. Board of Supervisors are managing over the entire county, that includes the law enforcement, and that is part of our role as Board of Supervisors, to engage with each department, Elections Department, the contracts that are being awarded for roads and maintenance, all of these things. That's the role of the Board of Supervisors and that is definitely something that we should be responsible for.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Okay, and so as I was saying before, the, you know, the board does approve the budget and approves funding for the sheriff and the Sheriff's Department and the Sheriff's deputies, but it's important to remember that the board does not directly supervise specific sheriff's deputies or even the sheriff in this case. So I just wanted to clarify that and I think that my time is going to be up, so.
Thank you. This question is for Mr. Sizer. You have a minute and a half. Will you support the county's involvement in hosting asylum seekers?
Well, certainly. I am a strong supporter of the United States Constitution. The Constitution actually gives them, folks who are in need, in desperation, obviously in fear of threat or danger, that an individual can come to the United States seeking asylum. That is a, that is actually a legal process that is included in a constitutional right. There are many avenues. Obviously, once they've sought asylum, they certainly can honor the United States by applying for a United States citizenship process. Like myself, I'm adopted, I was naturalized. I'm proud of being an American because it gives me the great pleasure of recognizing the blessings that I've received from our country and certainly it's honorable for anyone who comes to the United States, whether, whatever method that they've come in, that it's encouraged to apply for citizenship because part of that is also engaging in whatever is available as a citizen to be able to help protect and defend a unique government and form of life that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, you have one minute to respond.
Okay, I think I'm getting the hang of this a little more now. Thank you for that and I think it's really great that here in Southern Arizona, that the Pima County, the city of Tucson, we are actually, we are actually one of the largest areas for refugee relocation and for those seeking asylum. And it's something that I noticed working in the hospital because of course, everyone at some point sometimes requires medical attention and we see everyone and we accept everyone in the emergency department. And so I've had some really great opportunities to interact with many members of that community right here in Southern Arizona. So we have an amazing diversity of folks from all over the world who are refugee seekers and asylum seekers going through that legal process and I think it's something that I absolutely embrace and would happily continue to support at the county level, you know, with of course, the restraints, with the constraints, within the constraints of our budget.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Sizer, you have 30 seconds to respond.
And I want to, I guess I want to be clear that asylum versus, for an example, someone who enters through your front doors knocking and they're invited and they're able to come in versus an individual that breaks through your window, enters your home, right? So it's the same way in our country. We need to separate the two and recognize our rule of law and our Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, this question is for you. You have a minute and a half. The question is, we've seen the effects of COVID-19 on public health in our community. Do you believe in a mandate for wearing masks and what would you do differently than what is being done now?
Thank you for that question and the public health crisis is, as I mentioned, something that really motivated me to get involved at the county level and to seek this office. So I actually do support the county-level mask requirement. Additionally, I support and still would support a statewide level requirement that the governor really, I believe, should have put into place quite a long time ago. This is right now because there's no curative therapy for COVID-19 and there is not a vaccine that is ready for distribution, nor will there be for the general public probably until the second quarter or beyond in 2021. We absolutely must use the basic public health, you know, like methods that we have at our disposal, which includes preventing transmission by mask wearing and social distancing. Those are really the only defenses we have. So at this point, yes, we need to work on getting as many people, ideally 95% or more of the public. If we can get that level of compliance with mask wearing, we could actually stop the transmission of the novel coronavirus and likely a lot of influenza and other transmissible diseases during this upcoming winter season, which as we know, could be a really, really bad one given both the flu and also COVID.
Thank you. Mr. Sizer, you have one minute to respond.
Thank you, Vivian. First of all, I want to recognize that I have a very good, close friend who was in the hospital and he did not have COVID-19 and he went in for a surgery and doctors and nurses coming in and out of his room were all wearing masks and somewhere along the way, while he was in the hospital room, he got COVID-19. So the reality is, what I'm trying to add is that we need to be transparent and clear and concise and understand the scientific facts on masks or no masks. There doesn't appear to be confidence that mask is actually preventing it. So we need to understand and make decisions with confident facts rather than doing a control mechanism over our population because what that leads to is irresponsible government power being flung around, right? So I believe that masks are okay, however, we need to have confidence when we make those kind of decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, you have 30 seconds to respond.
It is indisputable that the public health community and the medical community at large, certainly that masks are indicated and are very, very helpful and they're not 100% just like most things, but they are absolutely necessary to help us decrease the transmission of this virus and that's a, it's a very simple thing we can do and a patriotic one that we can do for each other and for our neighbors.
Thank you. Mr. Sizer, here's a question for you. You have a minute and a half to respond. Will you continue to support the county's funding of Job Path and other workforce training programs?
Job Path is an important piece because that, what that does is encourage not individuals who receive free stuff on a regular basis, so they come back to get free stuff, but Job Path is a form of going out to teaching them to fish so that they can feed themselves from that point on. So it's a scriptural viewpoint that Job Path is encouraging them to, it could be someone who was terminated or who lost a job because of the COVID business shutdown. There could be all kinds of factors and certainly we need to have an avenue for those individuals to get back up and running and not be stagnant and receiving taxpayer dollars, right? And taxpayer dollars are designated for individuals to give them relief out of these situations and that is what we need to support, but we also need to create an opportunity such as Job Path for them to be able to get certified, get a professional certification of some type, or even go out there and get a job, right? So I support it and I highly encourage it. It's a great, great tool for the county.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, you have one minute to respond.
Certainly, and I think we are definitely in agreement here that Job Path is a very good investment, a wise investment for the county. It is actually something that the county has increased significantly. I believe they've actually almost doubled the county input in terms of investment into the Job Path program over the past several months due to the pandemic downturn and I think that is an excellent use of resources given the fact that so many people have been affected and are struggling to, you know, make sure that they can put food on the table, afford their medications and keep themselves in their homes. So I think we are in agreement that this is a very, very wise investment for the county and I will continue to support it.
Thank you. Mr. Sizer, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Certainly, I guess since we're in agreement, but I believe that, you know, I had a technical degree. One of the key pieces to that is JTED-type programs, community college, technical certifications so that folks can actually qualify for specific jobs and that's actually an important piece even for those who are in high school and graduating and they decide they don't want to go to college, they can certainly get a certification and so JTED programs in those high schools are also pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, next question, you have a minute and a half. This summer was the hottest on record and with cooling centers closed, many families and children who don't have central air conditioning at home were suffering. Do you think the county should increase the number of cooling centers in the future because it may get hotter and hotter over the summers in the future?
Thank you for that. The, that is a very good point. We are, because of the pandemic and a lot of the public health situation, we are, I think, not discussing some of the other issues that are tremendously important, including, you know, the, the, I believe to be human, human effect that we're seeing with regard to our temperatures, the erratic or dramatic weather patterns and increasing overall, you know, temperatures throughout the planet. So that is something we've seen affecting the West Coast, which was largely on fire until recently and still is in some cases. And of course, for Southern Arizona, we are seeing, Arizona generally seeing record temperatures. It is very important that during, during these very, very hot summers that we are able to make sure people have safety and shelter and can, and can stay cool. And I would be supportive of, based on demonstrated need, looking at the county, putting forward additional cooling centers depending on the area and again, based on the demonstrated need in those areas. And just overall, I think that's one of the main reasons. And just overall, I think that's one of the main reasons why during much of the primary, I talked about the need for clean, green energy generating industry, something that we can actually do quite a lot of here in Southern Arizona. Wind generation, solar, photovoltaic, all these things are priority for me.
Thank you. Mr. Sizer, you have one minute to respond.
Well, obviously, solar energy, coal, solar winds, plenty of things associated to opportunities for the county, including cooling centers. So really, I think, I think the reality is, is that we need to make sure as far as like solar cells and encouraging all that. Those are great. But again, we need to make sure that we're, we're growing our economy. We certainly need to make sure that we're maintaining the human issue as far as individuals. I know there are plenty of federal grant funds that come in that help create those opportunities in our county. And that'll be part of the board supervisor's role to look at every single opportunity and then put Pima County as a filler if the federal funding is insufficient based on the populations and the issues going on in our county. So it's not all county. There's plenty of federal aid coming in also. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Certainly. And I will build on that and that a priority of mine at the county level will be to leverage our ability to draw down as many state, if available, or federal funding streams to help support multiple, multiple programs and efforts at the county level. But of course, economic ones and ones that can help us to further develop the clean, green economy here in Southern Arizona for, for those, those are quality, high-paying, non-outspurable jobs that we need here for our families.
Thank you. For the next question, Mr. Sizer, you have a minute and a half. What is your opinion of the Rosemont Mine? And what would you do about it?
Okay, so Rosemont Mine, number one, there, there are multiple factors. I know the folks that live near Rosemont Mine have raised concerns about the water quality. I also know about the side of jobs growth and opportunities. I know about the, the mining facility specs and how they're dealing with this question of whether the water is being polluted or not. Again, I'm a nonpartisan viewpoint because I'm not a career politician. I'm an engineer. So I'm, I, as a board of supervisor, I would be looking at it from a fact-based perspective, not a political agenda. Is there pollutants? If there is, then we need to address that as a county because we are responsible for the protection and safety of our citizens. Is, is, are the jobs more important than a gossip-based decision? Absolutely. So we got a balance between the two, just like the whole COVID mask issue. We need to make sure that we run the facts to the ground and be transparent with the public rather than deciding because someone is paranoid and they create a group that wants to push that paranoia and then damages everything, right? So the county supervisors need to be accountable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, you have one minute to respond.
Darn it, I'm sorry, I forgot. Thank you. Yeah, Rosemont Mine, I know, has been, has been a topic for quite a while. And I think that as a supervisor, it's incredibly important to reflect the viewpoints, the opinions of those, not only in District Two, but of course, in Pima County. And make sure that those voices are being adequately heard and that there is transparency in any process with regard to the mine moving forward. I have historically not been a supporter in, in part reflecting on the potential, the potential large amount of water usage. And then, and looking at the jobs that would be created, many of those jobs would be startup-related and would not be permanent jobs ongoing. And many of the jobs that would be brought to Southern Arizona would actually be outsourced. So or at least from other parts of the country and not necessarily coming from people in this area.
Thank you. Mr. Sizer, you have 30 seconds to respond.
All right, response to first the jobs and outsourced, meaning individuals coming from outside. Again, this all goes back to our children and the JTED education and getting them qualified and certified so they can obtain these jobs. So let's shift it from any businesses that are using outside sources, let's shift it to inside our county because that's what we need to be doing. Additionally, I've been boots on the ground in, in District Four is, is the other district that the Rosemont Mine crosses into. And I've spoke to many residents in Corona Day Tucson and around. And I can tell you that they are, there are many that are concerned about the, the water contamination. And I've gone and spoke to some of the leadership of the mine industry, looked at the technical designs on how they handle water and how, whether it impacts the water quality. So this is the role of the board supervisor. We need to be doing it down to the facts, not at a political level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, this question is for you. You have one and a half minutes. As scientists, how do you interpret the reduction of positive COVID-19 test results after mask mandates are enacted?
I, that I think is, I think that is a reflection that many, maybe not all, but many of the people are in fact taking the public health recommendations very seriously and are wearing masks when, you know, when out in public closer, closer than six feet to other, to other people. That I, I, I'm very pleased to see those numbers because we know that, that that does show us that, you know, the barrier protection, the masks are actually having an effect. Again, we could see an even, an even more dramatic reduction and continue that reduction, I think, until we can get to a point where we have curative therapy and/or a vaccine that can be distributed to the general public. If we can increase the number of folks that are participating, that again, 95% is, is the, is kind of the magic number there. We really want to get almost everybody doing this on a regular basis. Again, this is a virus much like influenza and others that require droplets, respiratory droplets, to, to hop from one human host to, to the next. And that can only happen within a certain number of feet, depending on the conditions of a room that you happen to be in, air conditioning, et cetera. So truly, if everybody involved is wearing a mask, it massively decreases the ability for this virus to get from one place to another. There is a small amount of contact transmission, but that's very, it's pretty small.
Thank you. Mr. Sizer, you have one minute to respond.
So I work for a DOD contractor in Tucson. And they have certainly required masks. They also do temperature check as you enter through the gate. The reality is, is that every business can actually adjust to the six-feet distance and masks on and getting their temperature checked as they come into facilities. I'm sure that's up to businesses if they want to go to that extent. But certainly, my business that I work for does that. The reality is, is we need to be a bit more fact-based on the whole shutdown thing of small businesses, social gatherings. Because we are impacting, when we do that shutdown, you're impacting the livelihood and business of those business owners. They, they, there's many of them that are going to have difficulties, uphill battle. The county board supervisors need to adjust to resolve some of these things. And that's going to be some of our key roles. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Thank you very much. The, yeah, I, I really think that, that we have an obligation to, again, make sure that we do everything we can to, to crush this pandemic. Because again, we can't, we can't fix it. The people that, that unfortunately have been passing away, some of them in my own hospital, we cannot actually fortunately fix the situation. And we've seen what happens when, say, the university reconvenes and a large group of humans come together. The transmission rates and the new number of infections actually start to, to rise quite precipitously. So we know what happens when folks gather, go to bars, eat inside at restaurants and do things that are dangerous right now. The infectious rates go up.
Thank you. Mr. Sizer, you have a minute and a half for the next question. Do you support building new street car, another street car line that would go through the south side and to the airport? And it's possible displacement of residents on the south side?
Okay, so I don't support any new adventures until we get the primary responsible infrastructure stuff up and running. For example, roads should not be lasting for a few months and you got potholes all, all over them, right? They need to be designed to last, such as the county roads, not the county, the state roads and the federal highways. So those roads are definitely designed to last. So what is going on with our county roads and why do they need to be maintained just about every single year or every other year? Why can't they last five to 10 years? What do we need to do to improve that infrastructure piece? So I don't, I don't support any new adventures because I, at this, at the start, because we need to make sure that we're back on foot and making sure our infrastructure and our facility is welcoming. Because one, when we have talent coming into our local economy, engineers, scientists, doctors, if they're coming from out of state, we want them to stay here and settle here with their family and grow our economy. And when they have to travel in a frustrating infrastructure system, that's a problem because they are leaving. They come here for a year or so and then they leave. So we're not using our smarts. We need to keep the politics out and figure out how we're going to retain those folks and grow our infrastructure and not create new opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, you have one minute to respond.
I actually do think that that, that makes sense. And as, I think it's important to look at any new construction, for example, that line and other lines. We need to look at regionality. And I think one of the things that makes Southern Arizona, Pima County specifically, so attractive to, at this time, outside businesses looking to, you know, escape more densely populated coastal regions, for example. Forbes just ranked us one of the best places to relocate to, which I think is fantastic for Pima County. One of the things that I believe that, that we can use as a selling point is the fact that we do have the RTA, that we do have the Regional Transportation Authority, that the 20-year plan passed back in, I believe it was 2005 or '06. And we need to look at, of course, renewing that, which I support. But then looking at other aspects, not just roads. We have to, of course, have roads that are in, in good states of repair. But we also need to look at bike paths and rail lines and other things that we can do to, to have, to help with that regional, regional look.
Thank you. Mr. Sizer, you have 30 seconds to respond.
So I just want to give you an example with my employer. Certainly, when you have professional engineers coming in and starting to work here, some of the frustration is, is there isn't really a immediate, smooth method of going from East Tucson to the airport site. So the, when you, when you go into the airport and you're going across all these roads that have significant potholes and construction every other year, we're putting a lot of, a lot of stress into those hardworking professionals that are, that originally accepted jobs to be here. And then they realize they don't want to because it's not, it's not a comfortable, welcoming feel, right? And we need to resolve that.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, you have one and a half minutes. And this is the question. What do you think about having a bond for repairing our county roads?
That, of course, I would support that because that would be something that goes to the voters for approval. I think that we, we did actually have that recently, unfortunately, did not pass. And if, you know, moving forward, I would, I would certainly commit to working with the other supervisors to make sure that the people understand, understand the issue, exactly what, what the bond funds would be going to do and why they are very important. Because unfortunately, we do not at this time get a sufficient number of dollars from the state, from the per funding that is not adequate, I think, at the municipal or at the county level to do the type of road repairs and expansions that are required for, for an area of this, of this population. So I believe that we can be a bit more aggressive in campaigning for and educating the voters as to what exactly it is that they are voting on for any further bond measures to make sure that they have that information at their disposal and can then make an informed decision, which I believe when faced with, you know, the facts and the correct information, that, that people will, will actually vote to support additional road repair measures going forward. And a bond issue could potentially pass if it is well-executed in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Sizer, you have one minute to respond.
So first of all, our county has some of the largest budget. In fact, it's the number one budget out of the entire state, all counties. Pima County has the highest budget. And the most financial opportunities going through here, but yet we don't seem to be growing like Phoenix. Why is that? So we need to stop doing investments like, for example, worldview investment. And having been employed in that area and felt the explosion that happened a few years ago, that was our taxpayer dollars going up in flames because our investment went to that while our roads are not being maintained. So I think there's some confusion in the role of the supervisor and the county administrator, how we're supposed to be managing and distributing the budget. The primary purpose of the taxpayer dollars is to fund the infrastructure, take care of our law enforcement, our first responders, all of those things first. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, you have 30 seconds to respond.
There we go. So, oh, yes, back to, back to the, back to the bond issue. I think it's also important to look for other opportunities to have public-private partnerships and where possible for road expansion, repair and other infrastructure needs, especially transportation ones in Pima County. I think there are unique opportunities that we can, we can really look for with a private industry and the private sector to, to expand and really have a synergistic situation that is helpful to the taxpayers and of course, to the industry.
Thank you. Mr. Sizer, this is our last question. You have one and a half minutes. And the question is, what is your opinion of a fast rail system from Tucson to Phoenix?
As an engineer, wow, that would be awesome. That would be great. My, my two kids and my wife are family. We could go to Phoenix without, without having the stress of the drive and go check out the Legoland and Undersea World and whatever else that they've got up there and visit family and friends. That'd be great. Certainly, that, I think that sounds like a venture that is more likely to be funded by the federal government. I don't see the state chipping much into that. It'd be great if our state legislature created a bill to help motivate that. I know there was an attempt a few times in the past, but I certainly would support it. But I, once again, that would be a, after the primary responsibility of our budget is taken care of before any new things come up, including bonds or any new ventures. Those all need to be secondary. First, with our current budget, we need to be taking care of the infrastructure and all the key pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hines, you have one minute to respond.
Yeah, I actually almost brought up the, the idea of a fast rail system between the cities of Phoenix and Tucson. Yeah, I actually almost brought up the, the idea of a fast rail system between the cities of Phoenix and Tucson on the previous, one of the previous questions. So thank you for, for asking this separately. So I, I do support this. I, I agree that this would require a significant amount of federal grant funding specific to the project, and it does require a lot of time. The approval process, the approval process is quite lengthy. People are probably familiar with the kind of approval process and, you know, investigations and environmental impact and all the things that are necessary, but have to go into, for example, a, a new freeway or, and, you know, all sorts of things like that. Take, take quite a bit of time. From my part, as if elected accounting supervisor, I would certainly work to facilitate and make that process as efficient and fast as, as possible for, for the, for the voters.
Thank you. And Mr. Sizer, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Again, yeah, I, I reiterate that the funding would definitely be a challenge. Right now is most likely not, would never occur simply because we've gone through this COVID issue. We've got a lot of businesses, especially small businesses. I think one of the key things is to give our small businesses tax incentives so that they can actually get through this difficult time. Because really, we need to be growing our economy and not venturing off and stretching ourselves very, very thin by doing this new activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for the closing statements. Mr. Hines, we will start with you. You have one minute.
Very sorry about that. I keep forgetting to unmute myself. Well, thank you again to, to the League of Women Voters. For those who are, are tuning in, whatever, whatever way you're doing that, really appreciate the opportunity to take a, take a few moments, an hour, to, to be available to folks. I know it's a very strange time to be, to be campaigning, and it's a pretty scary time still for a lot of folks just because of what the effect is. A lot of people are in their homes and find themselves that now, suddenly, they're, they're, they're telecommuting, and they're also now school teachers, which is probably not something anyone was expecting a year ago. My sister and many of my family members are in the same, are in the same boat. And I just want to say that we're going to get through it. It's going to be another number of months, probably six, eight, 10 months before we can start to get back to what I think we would call more normal. But I think we're going to get through it, and if everyone wears their masks, we're going to be able to minimize the, the impact on the community. And I just wanted to thank everyone for, for taking a listen.
Thank you. Mr. Sizer, you have one minute for your closing statement.
Thank you, Vivian, for narrating this wonderful opportunity to, to speak with League of Women Voters. So first of all, I, I want to go back. My name is Anthony Sizer. I'm an Eagle Scout. I'm an engineer. I'm not a career politician. I'm running for, running for supervisor because I want to represent you and be your problem solver. I'm not a career politician. I love to listen to the issues and figure out how the powers available to me to help solve your specific problem. I believe in constitutional rights. I believe in freedom. I believe in liberty. And these are all the things that I did not have and I would not have had, had I been left in India. So I'm here to represent you and to be your problem solver. Again, my name is Anthony Sizer. I'm your candidate for Board of Supervisors. My webpage address is sizerfordistrict2.gop. Thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you for joining the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson for this forum. And thank you candidates for sharing your thoughts and opinions with the audience members. Be sure to mail your ballot in or do early voting or go to your polling place on Tuesday, November 3rd. Be sure to vote. You can view a recording of this forum on the Facebook page for the League of Women Voters as well as on our YouTube channel. This is Vivian Hart for the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson. Goodbye.